Not many complaints.
He's going by there.
Come on, I've.
Well, it's just like, listen, if I came up. Hey folks, you just can't have her. I told Stuart Lofton, I told Stuart I would have a discussion with him.
Is there some, is there an indication? Office building across the street where Pat and Lou used to be?
I think that's where we built the lead standers. I don't have to pay for that.
No, no, that's.
The thing.
We're wondering if they follow chapter five twenty-seven.
The office building part of that.
Here we thought so many.
Good God, Bert.
We'll call the regular meeting to order. We have with us tonight the Reverend Bobby Alger from Crossroads Community Church who will deliver the invocation.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, at the beginning of a new year, two thousand and thirteen, we take a moment just to honor you and invite you to be a part of the inner workings of this county. Lord, I pray that the issues that are at hand and will face us this year, that there would be found good solutions, acceptable solutions, and pleasing solutions, not only to you, God, but for the citizens of this county. Lord, we take a moment to remember those that are less fortunate, that have found their way among us. May the generosity of hearts of citizens of this county, as well as organizations, work together in order to bring them forth for the good and their good. Lord, I pray blessing upon this board. I thank you for the service that they bring to this community. Bless them, bless their meetings this year. And Father, may your kingdom come, and may your will be done here in this county as it is in heaven. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Vice Chairman Ewing, release and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Stand in face flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next on your agenda is the organization of the Board of Supervisors for two thousand and thirteen. Item A, the election of a vice chairman. Are there nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Mr. Ewing to serve again.
All right, we have a nomination of Mr. Ewing. Are there any other nominations? Is there a second to the nomination of Mr. Ewing?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a motion that the nominations be closed?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor Collins. Is there a second to that?
Second to that motion.
Supervisor Lofton, let's vote on the motion to end the nominations. Is all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Now, all those in favor of Mr. Ewing for vice chairman, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no.
Mr. Chairman, I'd stand.
All right, congratulations, Vice Chairman Ewing.
Thank you, sir.
Next, the adoption of the rules of procedure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we accept the rules of procedures as written.
Okay, I think they're commonly classified as Robert Scholz's order, as revised, revised and something. New and revised, is that what it is?
New and revised.
New and revised, is that acceptable?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Ewing. Any discussion? Hearing all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next is selection of parliamentarian. Are there nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I'd nominate Mr. Riley.
All right, we have a motion for Mr. Riley. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Is there a motion to close nominations?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ewing. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Let's vote on the motion to close the nominations. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Now, the vote on Mr. Riley as parliamentarian. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Congratulations, Mr. Riley. Selection of the time and place for regular meetings. Mr. Riley, will you state what that is?
Currently, it is seven fifteen on the second and fourth Wednesdays of each month, one oh seven North Kent Street Board of Supervisors Meeting Room.
Now, do we, should, I thought we'd been through with this before, that we needed to go ahead and specify the canceled meeting part. It doesn't say that.
In your, in your rules of procedure, it is addressed as to if meetings are canceled?
Are covered?
Yes, sir.
For anybody that knows, what is that, if it's canceled, that it's the next day?
It's the next day, provided the weather permits.
Is there a motion to approve the selection of time and place for regular meetings?
May I offer a suggestion? Would the board be willing to change the time of the board meeting to seven o'clock rather than seven fifteen? I realize back in the earlier days, when we had more of an agricultural presence on the board, seven fifteen was a more, an easier time to make the meetings, particularly in the summer, and was wondering if there would be a willingness to change the time.
Those who accommodate us, and the only ones I can think of are the television folks, is there any problem with that?
Not that I know of. I don't, I don't think it's a problem.
Taking their head.
Are they there?
Yeah, she's giving a thumbs up.
I see a thumbs up. All right, so, so far as anyone knows, there's not objections to this. The board want to entertain that change.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we add that seven o'clock timeframe to our time and place of regular meetings.
All right, everyone understand the motion, time and place as is, with a change to, from seven fifteen to seven. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Ewing. Any discussion? We'll see how many of us are late for how long. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Some of us have been doing this a long time at seven fifteen.
I understand that.
All right, now, the chairman's board and committee assignments. You have before you the board assignments, and they are as is, and obviously absent the supervisor vacancy slot, with a caveat that had asked Supervisor Collins to be the stand-in chairman, but it would be my personnel or HR. It would be my intent that, that the new player would take on a chairmanship, and so I will reverse that later. And then the citizens, I apologize, I did not get that done. There are too many of you who are chairman of committees that I want to have some talks with, and one of the things I want to discuss is perhaps a mandatory attendance or step off the committee for, for citizens, but I just did not get it done, and it's, I just have to apologize. But, so I give you today the, the board member assignments, and they basically are unchanged. And I will begin to work as hard as I can with you that are chairmen, it's about your citizen representation. Next, the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Riley?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Ewing. Any discussion? Hearing all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is adopted. Next is the consent agenda. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd offer the following tabs for the board's consideration. Tab B, resolution of appreciation. Tab G, Parks and Recreation Commission Report. Tab H, Landfill Oversight Committee Report. Tab I, Public Works Committee Report. Tab J, Joint Finance Committee Report, and Tab L, Transportation Committee Report.
Questions? Not, is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Supervisor Ewing to adopt the consent agenda. Is there a second? I heard it here. Is there a second down there?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
You didn't make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I had a motion I heard down here.
That's fine.
Lofton.
Mr. Lofton, you make the second.
I certainly will.
Vice Chairman, not Chairman. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The consent agenda is approved. Mr. Riley, did anyone sign up for citizen comments?
No, sir.
All right, Board of Supervisors, comments, are there any? Hearing none, we'll move on to the minutes of the work session, December twelfth, two thousand and twelve.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval, it was submitted.
All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes of the work session, December twelfth. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, since I was not present at those meetings, I think I should abstain from voting on those two.
Mr. Tibbs, you don't note that? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The work session minutes, December twelfth, two thousand and twelve, were approved, and next is the regular meeting on December twelfth, two thousand and twelve.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ewing makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Any discussion? Hearing all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, and Mr. Lofton, I assume same vote?
Yes, sir.
All right, now, under County Officials Committee Appointments, I'm not there. Extension Leadership Council, Redbud, are we ready?
Not yet, Mr. Chairman.
Parks and Recreation, Gainesboro, are we ready? We don't have a Gainesboro person, so we're not ready. Board of Equalization, Gainesboro, same issue. And then, Chapter Ten Board, Mr. Riley, have we had any interest?
Not yet, sir, but I'm gonna work.
Maybe?
We, we have, we have a strong maybe.
Okay, well, good.
She hasn't gotten back to me yet.
All right, did I miss anything? No, I believe so. Committee appointments were easy tonight. Next is a resolution authorizing the county attorney to file a petition for writ of election to fill vacancies in the office of Gainesboro District, representative to the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Williams, or Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would request the board's approval to file the writ.
Are there questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval of the resolution to hold a special election on the same date as the general election.
We have a motion by Supervisor Collins. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The resolution passes. Next is a resolution authorizing the county attorney to file a petition for writ of election to fill a vacancy in the office of Commonwealth's Attorney. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request, request the board to authorize the county attorney to file the writ for special election for the office of Commonwealth Attorney.
In November?
Yes, sir.
Questions? Hearing none, is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is made by Supervisor De Haven. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Ewing. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Next is the request from the Commissioner of Revenue for refund. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize in advance if I mispronounce this refund applicant's name. We are in receipt from the Commissioner to request, authorize the treasurer to refund Bashar, Mashar Al Zubi, the amount of three thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixteen cents for a refund of personal property vehicular tax for two thousand nine through two thousand twelve, and registration fees on a vehicle formerly registered and plated that was re-registered with the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles as an antique vehicle. The taxpayer only recently realized the benefits of this registration and had not informed the Commissioner of the changes at DMV. And pursuant to the appropriate code sections, we are requesting that the board authorize the refund.
Questions? Mr. Lofton?
Perhaps the Commissioner of Revenue might answer this. Is three years to look back that's mandatory on something like this, or is it just, I'm sorry, I'm sorry? Okay, thank you.
Are there questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the refund.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Ewing. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor De Haven. Any discussion? Hearing all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Excuse me, let me do a voice vote on that. Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Next, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are in receipt from the Commissioner a request to authorize the treasurer to refund a taxpayer the amount of three thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and eighty-six cents for two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve residential taxes based on proper filing of proof of one hundred percent permanent and total disability directly due to military service as required under the Virginia Code change as a result of the constitutional amendment that took effect on two thousand eleven. Taxpayer's name cannot be made public because of the application and legal requirements as to privacy, but is known to the Commissioner, the Treasurer, and the county attorney on a confidential basis. We would respectfully request that the board authorize the refund.
Questions? Curiosity question, Mr. Riley. Is that private information for board members?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Yes, sir, it's private information for anyone that doesn't positively have to know the name, and since I informed the county attorney, I'm not to disclose it elsewhere.
So if a supervisor came to your office and asked who, they would not be entitled to know?
That's correct, and that's true on any of the disability relief that we have, either for the age of the disabled or the veterans.
Seems like bad legislation to me, but I understand the sensitivity to the privacy of the individual. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, while, while the Commissioner's here, this is Murphy, if I may. Sorry, when you're in. Are there any other parts to this amendment that may affect taxpayers in the future? Is this, is it just this permanent and total disability directly due to military service? Is that the only constituent part of this amendment to the Constitution that you know of?
Yes, that amendment, it was specifically for military personnel that have been deemed one hundred percent and permanently disabled from their military service. The amendment was broadened a little bit in legislation last year that included the less-than-physical, like the, the shock, you know, the shell shock and those kind of victims are included as well, and they made it clear under that code. But it does apply only to people in military service or their surviving spouse.
Okay.
But the military service personnel had to be alive on January one, two thousand eleven, for the spouse to be eligible afterward, if something happens to them. And then the spouse cannot remarry and must retain that residence as her principal residence or his.
Okay, so that's the only ramification to you as Commissioner from that amendment?
Right, and we have quite a list of them. This one just happened to not know about it right away, and so when he came in, then we, we were able to qualify.
Okay, just looking for the impact on any filings like that. Would there be a whole lot more of those? But we think we got most of them.
We got all the ones we knew about at the time. Of course, as people move in and buy homes and qualify, you know, they'll come forward, or as new people become disabled, like in Afghanistan or somewhere else, or get an upgrade in their disability rating by the VA, then they also become eligible.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Questions?
A comment. If there's anyone that deserves a tax break like this, it is a military person that's been deemed total disabled, and totally appreciated service.
All right, if there's no other questions, let's have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for approval of refund.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher, and understand that my query had nothing to do with the, the rightness of the decision. It's just that why in the world would we vote on something that we don't know what it is? So I, I, I think there's gaps in here in process that don't make a lot of sense to me, but having said that, I intend to support it. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The refund? Oh, yes, sir. Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Next, we'll move on to the Finance Committee Report. Vice Chairman Ewing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, soon as I find it here. Thank you, sorry, sir. The Finance Committee met December nineteenth at eight thirty, eight AM. Items one, five, six, seven, eight, and nine were approved on a consent agenda, and I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor De Haven. Discussion. Hearing none, Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and items one, five, six, seven, and nine are approved under consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, the Fire and Rescue Chief requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of twenty-three thousand, sixty dollars. This amount represents a VDEM grant awarded for the hazmat team. No local funds required. The committee recommends approval, and I so move.
We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Any discussion? Hearing none, Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
The sheriff requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and fourteen cents. This amount represents equipment and software needs for the computer forensic section within the criminal investigation unit. The committee recommends approval, and I so move.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor De Haven. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Lofton?
I have a question. See, the sheriff's present. Just want to know, I'm assuming that all this equipment and software needs were run by our IT department to see if there's any, if that's compatible, if that's what we need?
It was, however, it's not connected with the county's computer network.
I understand that, but I just want to get his expertise behind to make sure.
The IT department was present at the Finance Committee meeting.
Okay, good. Thank you.
No discussion? Hearing none, Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
The sheriff requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of eighteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-six cents. This amount represents proceeds from the sheriff's sale and is needed for vehicle maintenance and repairs. No local funds required. Committee recommends approval, and I so move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Any discussion? Hearing none, Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, item ten and eleven, the committee took no action. They're waiting for further information, so there's no action required. Concludes my report.
Thanks, sir. All right, we'll move on to a public hearing and ordinance to amend the Frederick County Code, Chapter one fifty-five taxation. Who is presenting?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will present. This includes Article One, General Provisions, Tax Returns and Failure to File in Interest on Delinquent Taxes. Article fourteen, Transient Oxytocy Tax, Preservation of Records and Examination and Enforcement, Failure to Collect or Remit Tax. Article sixteen, General Business License Provisions, Sections overriding conflicting ordinances, License Requirements, License Application, Transfer of License, Assessment of Admitted License Taxes and Enforcement. Article seventeen, Classified Business and Occupational License Provisions, Minimum Tax on Classified Business and Occupations. Article eighteen, Special License Provisions, this deals with license fee and tax for carnivals, circuses, and trained animal shows, itinerant and distressed merchant vendors, junk and secondhand dealers, pawnbrokers, precious metal dealers, and flea markets. Article nineteen, Meals Tax, Failure to Collect or Remit Tax and Enforcement. The purpose of these proposed amendments is to amend the filing and other requirements for certain taxes, to eliminate, eliminate interest on the machinery and tools tax, to amend the enforcement provisions of the transient occupancy tax and meals tax, and to make clarifying amendments to the provisions concerning the business license tax. And I will defer questions to the county attorney if any board member has one, but we are ready to proceed.
All right, seeing none, we will open the public hearing. As Mr. Riley said, the purpose of these proposed amendments is to amend the following and other requirements for certain taxes, to eliminate interest on the machinery and tools tax, to amend the enforcement provisions of the transient occupancy tax and a meals tax, and to make clarifying amendments to the provisions concerning the business license tax. Amendments to Article, County Code, Chapter one fifty-five, Articles one, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Are there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against these amendments? All right, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that the board approve the amendments as written.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Ewing. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask what precipitated all these changes?
I, I think I might, well, the, the law requires that if we charge interest on penalties, if we owe a refund to someone, we have to refund the money plus what interest we would have charged if they hadn't paid us. Right?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Collins has correctly identified one of the changes. The others were basically operational issues that the Commissioner of the Revenue's Office brought up to help make the administration and enforcement of the taxes work better for them, get some things in the ordinance that needed to be there, and get some things out of the ordinance that frankly had no place there, were just oddities. So the idea was to sort of modernize it and make it a little smoother.
So we have no liability for any prior actions that we've taken because we're taking these actions tonight?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion? Then we are ready to vote. Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. The amendments to Chapter one fifty-five, Articles one, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen are approved. Moving on to the next item is a public hearing. It's an ordinance to amend the Frederick County Code, Chapter one sixty-five, zoning, Article four, agricultural and residential districts. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Staff has received a request to include a setback exemption for accessory structures in the RA Rural Area Zoning District if it's the first structure to be constructed on a piece of property. Now, typically, the dwelling would be the first or the primary structure to be built, and the accessory structure would then have a lesser setback, which is typically fifteen feet on a side and rear. Under the current ordinance, however, if a structure other than the dwelling is constructed first, it would have to be the primary setbacks, which is typically fifty to a hundred feet on the side and rear, regardless of the structure type. So the amendment before you proposes to allow the construction of one non-habitable accessory structure with a lesser setback prior to the construction of the principal structure, and this accessory structure could not contain any residential uses and could not exceed six hundred and fifty square feet. So the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item at their January second meeting, and they recommended approval. So tonight, we're seeking a decision from the board on this proposed amendment. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Questions? Supervisor Lofton?
If in fact this, this accessory use structure, if it were built after the primary residence, would these square footage limitations still apply?
No.
So this is just, so if, if you built one prior to your primary structure being built?
Right.
After your primary structure is built, you could modify that structure to make it larger?
Correct.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now conduct a public hearing to consider ordinance to amend the Frederick County Code, Chapter one sixty-five, zoning, Article four, agricultural and residential districts, Part four oh one, RA Rural Areas District, Section one sixty-five dash four oh one point oh seven, setback requirements. Proposed revision to include a setback exemption for accessory structures in the RA district if it is the first structure to be constructed on a property. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this ordinance to amend? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Board members.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve the ordinance as amended.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Ewing. Any discussion? Hearing none, Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the ordinance to amend Frederick County Code, Chapter one sixty-five, zoning, Article four, agricultural and residential districts is approved. Next, we have a planning item, rezoning application oh eight dash one-two, East Gate Commercial, proffer revision.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is a public meeting item to review a minor proffer revision for original rezoning number oh two oh seven, the East Gate Commercial Development. If you'll take a look at the map on your left, even though it doesn't show on this graphic here, this is the location of the new Walmart down off Tasker and five twenty-two, and of course, we have the Home Depot Distribution Center there as well. And of course, we have the Home Depot distribution center there as well. These specific lots addressed by this rezoning are right here on the south side of Moranto Manor Drive, basically the southwest quadrant of that intersection with Route five twenty-two. The previous draft of the proffers, they were accepted with a right-in, right-out only access for those two parcels. What's being asked for tonight is a modification of those proffers to allow for right-in, right-out, and left-in. Please note that there's not a left-out allowed still. We did have them model this, reviewed by myself, and VDOT was found to function well. You'll notice some other modifications in the proffers that note where a gas station can or cannot be allowed. Those were built in as part of the modeling process, basically to make sure that we didn't net upward in trips developed by the overall development. That was where those came from. So frankly, very, very cut and dried as far as being, that's, that's the extent of the change. I can take any questions you may have, and we have Mr. Mizalovsky here representing the applicant.
Do representative want to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything added to Mr. Fisher's presentation, but if there's any questions...
Okay, questions to staff or the applicant? Supervisor Lofton, which?
One question that I hadn't thought about before was, why was this initially proffered out?
Mr. Lofton, I, back then, during rezonings, entrances were controlled by the proffer process because VDOT had not yet adopted access management guidelines. And so it was, back then, we were trying just to limit as much access as possible, thinking that that was the best way to go. And at the time, that seemed accessible. But since then, VDOT has adopted access management guidelines, which this new entrance does satisfy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Ewing?
There is only one interest, entrance involved?
Yes, sir. We have, yes, sir.
Okay.
We're changing just one entrance here. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Whose is this?
Shaun E., Mr. Shaun E. Mr. Chairman, the one, the one issue here, if this becomes problematic, if you read VDOT's comments, they have the authorization to actually remove those crossovers. So I would move for approval of rezoning application zero eight dash one-two.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion? Mr. Riley? We are starting a new process. Voice vote should do, should it not?
Yes, sir. Minor proffer amendment, no public hearing.
All's in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The proffer revisions to rezoning application oh eight dash one-two, East Gate Commercial are approved. Next is a master development plan, oh six dash one-two, Snowden Bridge, revision and addition. Go ahead.
Good, thank you. This is a master development plan to develop two hundred and eighty-five acres of land to zone our four residential planned communities, district, with a total of one thousand two hundred and thirty-four residential dwellings. Now I would note that this is part of the proffer cap of two thousand four hundred and sixty-five units that was done with the approved rezoning from two thousand and three. Now the property is located off of Old Charlestown Road and is accessed via Snowden Bridge Boulevard. And the development will consist of a mix of single-family townhouse and multifamily residential units. I would note that the master plan contains the majority of what is called Land Bay Three of the Snowden Bridge development. The master plan contains both a revision for a portion of Land Bay Three, which was originally approved back in two thousand and eight and administratively revised in two thousand and eleven, as well as additional acreage located in Land Bay Three. Now the master plan for Snowden Bridge is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance, and is also in conformance with the proffers from the rezoning number six of two thousand and three. So this master development plan is presented to the board supervisors as an informational item only. I would be glad to answer any questions that you may have, and Mr. Ty Lawson is here on behalf of the applicant.
Any questions to staff or the applicant? We thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Next is a resolution directing a comprehensive policy plan amendment, study of the light property in the Stonewall Magisterial District. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last month, Supervisor DeHaven commented that he, he would suggest we study the light properties, so tonight I'm seeking your formal direction. The lot, the light properties are about four hundred acres in size. They're near the intersection of Woodbine Road and Woodside's roads. And I, to clarify, they're adjacent to the Winchester and Western Railroad, not the CSX as I put in the agenda. They're up in the northern part of the county. Up near the Flying J interchange, if that's easy to locate it. And the reason this is being sought is currently, you can see the green line on your map, the sewer and water service area actually cuts these holdings in half. And through some discussions we've had with the business development advancement study at the planning commission, we have found that there's, this is an excellent location for business development, and FCSA has confirmed that there's adequate water and sewer to serve this area. So we felt it was appropriate to process a, a study to, to look at this comp plan aspect. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and what we're looking for is direction for the planning commission to study this request. Report back with a recommendation.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry. I have a question. In, in light of doing this study for that particular property, does it, does it add value to include some of the property north of that?
We, if, if it's so just your direction, we can look at that whole area. The target was the four hundred acre parcel, simply because we have looked at them in details and found that it was a great business opportunity. If you'd like for us to look at the general vicinity and revisit it, we can certainly do that.
I just wonder if that might not be a better approach than kind of piecemealing this along in that area?
Other comments? Process here. This was a supervisor-sponsored request. It's run through the cycle and come back to us.
It, it hasn't run through the cycle yet. This is the formality, if you want us to study it, this resolution tonight tells us to study.
Barring agreement tonight, it goes where and does what?
It, it'll go to the, to the comprehensive policy plan committee. They'll look at the SWAS aspects, will look at other properties, if that's your desire, and report back as a discussion item.
Well, it'll end up in public hearing before we see it again.
It'll end up as, at a discussion with you all, and then you can direct a public hearing.
Again?
Correct.
So there'll actually be three views of it, this one, that one, and the public hearing?
That's correct.
Okay. Seems like that's one more than we used to have, but maybe not.
We, we added this session tonight as a resolution to direct us what to do, simply because you control your comp plan. We didn't want to start the study if you didn't...
Our activity's been so low, you know, it's actually hard to remember what we used to do, to be really honest with you. So general feedback you're looking for now to, to perfect the application?
Yeah, we're looking for direction to proceed with the study, and just as Mr. Lofton said, if you have other areas you feel we want to incorporate, we can, we can absorb that also.
I'm straight as everybody else. Okay, is there any, do you actually want an action then, or is just the comments enough?
Direct, direct staff to do the study.
I believe he's asking for a motion to, um, what, approve the application or what? What is the exact motion?
To approve the resolution directing staff to do this study.
Resolution. Supervisor DeHaven?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would move that we adopt the resolution directing staff to undertake the study. While I have no objection to Mr. Lofton's comments, this particular parcel is what staff had asked, asked for, an opportunity to review. We had, as you will remember, recently done a, an evaluation of the SWASs in the northeast land use study of the last round, and the board had already directed staff not to make changes during that discussion. So I'd be open to other comments. I have no objection to staff going beyond this parcel, but our resolution only addresses this parcel.
Now, unless I read you wrong, this is the point in time when that decision is made, is it not?
If you'd like us to look else, to expand it, we can certainly do it, just...
Now.
Yeah.
So where are we? Motion is, is...
Motion is the resolution, and I'm asking if there is support for looking beyond that as Mr. Lofton has suggested.
All right, we're about to get a motion. Is there any support for a larger study?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move...
We should go with the resolution.
I, I would move that we direct staff to undertake the, the SWAS expansion study as, as indicated in our resolution, that if they come upon issues that they feel deserve additional consideration, that they come back to us with those.
All right, you've heard the motion. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Fisher, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, to clarify that, if in fact this is sent on, that additional acreage could be recommended to be studied?
I think as we stand right now, you would, he would be back before you asking, do you want to include that? They think it's a good idea to do that, but it will not be unless they come back.
Okay.
Is that be correct?
That's correct.
That, my intention.
All right, other discussion? Hearing on all's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? For helping us get through there. All right, next is a discussion on the proposed revisions to the master development plan review and submission process, or requirements, excuse me. Go ahead.
Good, thank you. As you stated, this is a proposed amendment to update the master plan submission and review requirements. Currently, the county ordinance does not, currently, excuse me, currently, the way that the planning department processes master development plans is outlined in Part A O, A to one of the zoning ordinance, the way we currently do them and the way the code mandates we do them are not currently in sync. So specifically, the zoning ordinance requires the planning commission to make a recommendation to the board of supervisors on these plans, and then subsequently, the board of supervisors is required to approve or deny master development plans. Now, due to the fact that master development plans demonstrate compliance with county code, and they are not scheduled for review until they meet all agency requirements, and have addressed all county agency comments and their compliance with everyone's codes. So master, most, excuse me, master development plans are only presented as informational items now to the planning commission and the board of supervisors, and we don't receive action on the plans anymore. So what we've done, we've drafted a number of changes to Part A to one of the zoning ordinance to update the master plan requirements, to revise how the master plans are processed, and reorganize the text for clarity. So the way the text is presented to you in your packet is the way that we currently process master plans, similar to the one that we just reviewed a few items ago. So the planning commission discussed this at their December fifth meeting, and tonight we are seeking a decision from the board supervisors to send these proposed amendments forward to public hearing. I'm glad, glad to answer any questions.
Now, as understood, the way you've written it, what the ordinance actually calls for is not what we currently do anyway.
Correct.
And so what you've tried to do is change the ordinance and modify slightly.
Correct.
And we have a new product, similar to what we do.
Right, the way the ordinance is drafted, the proposed amendments would follow the way we currently process things.
All right, the request is to send to public hearing. Are there questions?
Mr. Chairman? The master development plan has always been problematic for me, because we haven't set through, I have not gone through the full process of one. So we, as a board, we only review, we don't approve the master development plan. I think I've asked this question once before. Is that correct?
Right.
I can help a little bit there. There are some of us, and maybe down to me, I don't know, that were very interested in seeing the, the results of the ordinances that we approve as they appear and come to fruition in a project under a master development plan, and yet, because of double jeopardy of another reason, we were not allowed to vote on them. So staff has tried to accommodate that desire by, by having them come through us, and, and this ever continues to do that, but it causes some confusion. So we don't hold a public hearing on master development plans, and we won't vote now, but at least we get to see what all these ordinances that we pass look like when there's a project, which I think is extremely important, otherwise we'll never see them. But that's a personal opinion. Did I say it right?
Yes, sir.
Chuck?
Just an additional, I think, positive about it. It's also another opportunity for the citizens to realize what's going on and what's beginning to come to fruition, that probably, in, in some situations at least, hadn't been discussed for quite a long time.
Now, there was an ancient time when the planning commission held public comments on master development plans. Have they stopped doing that?
The master plans are still presented as informational items to the planning commission, but they, the planning commission still holds a public comment for them if citizens do wish to speak.
I think that's very misleading to the public personally, that they get the comment, but there's no vote taken.
Right.
Maybe someday they'll rethink that. And then when they get here, they can't speak.
Right.
So anyway, it's just another personal opinion.
That's always been a big issue with the public. Because they, they come thinking they can speak through an approval process that really doesn't exist, and if the planning commission is still doing that, highly recommend they take a real hard look at that, because it's really misinformation.
Yes, sir.
Impression for the public. And, but I think it does allow us to make comments if we see the way an ordinance gets applied, it doesn't intend to do what we thought it was gonna do.
So it's the difference between the two bodies, I think, is more of a problem than whether you do or you don't. Other questions or comments? The request is, is this ready to go to public hearing? Obviously, something had to change because the ordinance did not read or accurately depict our process.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think this is a good change. I totally support it.
All right, is that a motion?
I'll make a move. We forward it to public hearing.
All right, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven. Any discussion? Hearing on all's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Off to public hearing. Next is a discussion on tall grass and commercial industrial zoning districts, Chapter one twenty-two nuisances.
Good, thank you. Staff has been requested to draft a revision to Chapter one twenty-two nuisances to address the cutting of tall grass and weeds in commercial zoning districts. Now currently, the ordinance only permits the cutting of grass and weeds in residential zoning districts. There's also a new, new definitions and revisions to the notice requirements in the lean text included with the amendment. So this item was discussed by the DRC at their October meeting. The original review, the original revision that was presented to them included all commercial and industrial zoning districts, but the DRC recommended that the proposed revision be limited to only the B one and the B two districts, which is what is before you tonight. So the planning commission discussed this at their December fifth meeting, and they forwarded to the board for discussion. So tonight, we are seeking direction from the board on these proposed amendments as to whether they're ready to be sent to public hearing. Glad to answer any questions.
Questions to staff?
Mr. Chairman, oh, Supervisor Lofton, if you want to.
Supervisor Lofton?
Uh, for Mr. Collins, he had his hands in there first.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I, this is a subject that I've been...
Supervisor Collins, then.
That's right. This is a subject that's been, we've been dealing with in my district with two separate properties. The question I have is because we, we are talking about nuisances, can we expand this to include derelict buildings? I know we looked at that somewhat, and I hate to throw a wrench into the motor works here. I know we're just talking about grass tonight, but...
I would look to Rod for guidance on that.
Some of that does get covered under the building code. There probably is some other authority, although I think they're somewhat, that's a somewhat unrelated item probably to what's before the board tonight, but obviously, staff can look at it.
The planning department only covers the cutting of the grass and weeds, so that's why we're bringing this forward.
I, I know that several phone calls have been made to certain individuals' offices regarding properties in my location, and we have been unable to rectify the situation except for the goodness of other people's hearts. And, Mr. Chairman, I do agree, I think that this is a, this is a good move because we have had some commercial areas that have been abandoned and allowed their grass to grow and trees growing out of the buildings and vehicles and so on and so forth. So that's the only comments I have.
Perhaps that might help, help me because Supervisor Collins used the words abandoned developed property. I guess the concern I had about was undeveloped rezoned property, and was anybody had anywhere have any desire to farm those, and did we prevent this from happening? But I could, I could live with the abandoned developed property that's zoned, but the undeveloped, I was wondering how in the world that was gonna work.
That was discussed at the DRC, and that's the primary reason why the industrial district, districts were taken out, because there are some M1 properties that are, that are technically farmed, so that's why the DRC recommended those be taken out, but it was limited to just the, the more general commercial districts.
So as written, because I didn't look at it that way last night, as written, it's any rezoned property, commercial or industrial, it is not developed.
This ordinance would pertain to any developed or undeveloped property in the B1, which is the neighborhood business or the B2 business general districts only.
The undeveloped property, I'm not sure that there's been enough to convince me that that's a good idea. But that's just an opinion I have.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I don't wanna, I don't wanna walk over anybody else. Mr. Chairman, this, in my district, the field that is next to the Orc Cemetery property, which is the food line and such, that would be considered an undeveloped industrial area. So the property owners could allow that to go feral, and that's right in the middle of residential zone, right next to the shopping center, and that's one of the reasons I think that we were doing this. I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, there are certain properties here that people allow are cutting hay and such that, obviously, the grass is growing more than 18 inches, and I'm not sure how we rectify that other than by selective enforcement, but this was, this was an issue that has come up quite often this last year or so in my district, so I've been on staff to a certain degree.
Supervisor Lofton.
Well, I hadn't gotten into the discussion. I'm glad to hear those comments because that does raise some other questions, but I was wondering why we had a separate paragraph to incorporate the new zones, B1 and B2, if that couldn't just be incorporated into paragraph one, because it seems all the other wording is identical. Was there a reason behind that?
Just how I drafted it.
Supervisor De Haven.
Just a couple of comments. I support this change. At the very least, we're gonna help out those residential folks that live within 100 feet, but those are the only ones we're gonna help, and there are really very few of the ones that tend to be affected. And there are any number of properties in my district where this is a continuing issue. Part of it is, is land that was bought and rezoned but yet to develop, and no maintenance whatsoever is taking place. And some of it is property that was bought with a desire to rezon and develop, where the rezoning failed, and they're just completely abandoned for all intents and purposes. And great portions of them do not exist within 100 feet of existing residential, so we're not gonna help those situations. I don't know what those answers are, but, but I would want to be cautious attempting to go real far. This seems like a good step to take to, as a beginning.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Ewing.
I'm shooting in the dark. Would there be such a thing as a waiver to those pieces of property that are farmed, approval or something to bypass the ordinance if property is farmed? That would give you the out for farmed property and still-
The only, I mean, with, with the ordinance, we would have to receive a complaint from a neighboring, you know, resident or property owner that has an issue with it, so I would, I mean, anything can be built into the ordinance, but I would have concern that if we then tell them, well, we can't cut that property because they're still having the issue that they are complaining about. Just a side thought.
If I can make a comment.
Go ahead, sir.
We have gotten, over the last couple of years, we've tended to a lot of grass, tall grass complaints, mostly residential, but we do get them in these commercial areas as Mr. Collins mentions. From a staff perspective, we welcome the opportunity to try to address some of the complaints we're getting. I can tell you that the complaints that I'm aware of aren't, aren't farming operations, they're simply bought, you know, it's whether it's been recently bought, recently rezoned, it's just B1, B2 properties, it sits near houses, and somebody stirred up the dirt on the property and then stopped doing any development, walked away from it, and banks own it and everything like that. We would like to have an ordinance so we can at least talk to somebody and get some little bit of maintenance done. We're not, we're not requiring cutting the whole property, we're simply saying 100 feet close to roads, close to houses, so at least we can clean up a little bit of the area and try to address some of the concerns. I hear the concerns about the, you know, someone's growing straw or hay. At this point, those aren't the properties we're getting complaints about.
Supervisor Fisher.
Do you, do you know of current B1, B2 properties that are being farmed, that the hay's being cut off of? You don't know of any. I guess my only concern, I understand the issue, it seems like this needs a little bit more work on it. Couple pieces of property I'm probably gonna ask somebody and plan to check on, because I know, would hate to do something to inflict something on a property owner that be a negative, but again, I understand what you're trying to get at. I'm not sure where this is at this time, and I'm comfortable with it.
Well, I guess another way to look at it, government is giving a guarantee to a property owner that property adjacent to them will be kept in certain form, and the taxpayer will pay for that if the property owner doesn't. If that was government was supposed to do, to provide guarantees to a property owner about property adjacent to them, I can be sympathetic to somebody who has a bad neighbor, but does that become the burden of all the other folks is, is pretty close to where I end up.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, the issue that, one of the issues that precipitated all this was the property behind the CVS on Greenwood and Sensory Road, which is owned by a West Virginia bank. They purchased that property, they were going to develop it, they decided to hold off. There are two houses on that property which have been abandoned. In those properties, there's trees growing out of them, and the, it took them, when they, the bank finally realized that they had this property, and that even though they're not developing it, things still are growing there, it took them a couple of days to come in and bush hog the whole thing down, and that was at the main entrance to Orc Commons, that was up against the CVS parking lot. So I understand, Mr. Chairman, your, your position, but we had, my understanding is staff had no authority to do anything about that, and it was only after we reached out to the, to the owners of the property that they realized what was going on, and they addressed the issue. And that's, I, I completely understand, Mr. Chairman, I'm also, I don't like the government coming in and making, mowing people's, other people's lawns. I don't think that's why we're here, but the, at the same aspect, we have, the way it's written now, we had no ability to do anything if a property owner, an industrial property owner decides that he doesn't want to do anything about the property and it becomes a hazard and a nuisance.
Right, and I'll just add to that. This ordinance would really just give us the ability to cite the owners, to make, to notify them that they need to cut their grass. Typically, when a, when a property is owned by someone that we know the, the legal owner of the properties, we can typically get them to cut the grass. Where the county had to go in and cut grass and put liens on properties happened with a lot of foreclosures, so we don't want to be in the business of going out and cutting people's grass, but this would give us the ability to notify people that they need to cut their own grass, so.
But at the end, it does say, work done by county costs to become lien. Liens don't get paid, the cost remains.
Correct, and primarily, what we've had to use that for has been foreclosed properties.
Mr. Chairman, I, I know I spoke to the planning department regarding a piece of property in my district, very visible to the public, major highway, sitting in the middle of many businesses right around it, and it, they've walked away from it, and it is a mess now, terrible site. I don't know if government should get involved or not, but somebody needs to get involved to clean it up. It's really a distraction and devaluation of the property next to it.
Well, it's, it's easier for me to get there with the abandoned developed property than it is to whatever abandoned undeveloped property is. Some, to the, to some eyes, that might be returned to natural state, but I don't like the way it looks next door, so you come in and do something about it. Developed property, that's, you know, that, that seems to be a different category. So I, I don't know, maybe I just didn't talk to enough people beforehand or, or view enough of the atrocities that we're trying to deal with, but it troubles me. Anyway.
Mr. Chairman, may I make one more comment? This really doesn't address abandoned property unless it's got a structure on it, does it? Other than roadway?
It's developed or undeveloped, you said.
Oh, it is? Okay, I'm sorry, I misread it.
But only the portion that's within, within 100 feet of a residential unit.
Okay.
And I assume that's an occupied residential.
It could be a field if it's rezoned.
Beside of a residence.
I mean, the ordinance doesn't specify occupied, but I mean, someone would have to complain about the grass being near a dwelling. So I mean, typically, that would be the, the property owner that lives in the house.
Some of the parcels in my district, and I think some of the parcels in Supervisor Collins' district that are of concern, are residential units.
Right.
That haven't been occupied since they were purchased.
Correct.
So I think that's an important question to try to answer before we adopt ordinance.
I think I misunderstood what you're saying. You're saying that on the commercial property, a residential structure sitting on the commercial property is what you were, I'm sorry, I was, I was thinking the adjacent property, that they would have to cut it around.
Within 100 feet of an occupied adjacent structure.
Right.
Occupied. And I'm not sure how you want to designate between the two, but there's a big difference.
Right. I mean, I, I could tweak the text to, to be more clear.
These are really tough issues.
Well, then theoretically, we could have a rezoned piece of property with, with undeveloped property next to it. Somebody moves there, builds a house, looks across the fence and says, I don't like that, I want 100 feet of it cleared, but it was like that when they moved there. Are we getting into that?
Mr. Chairman, have we had any issues with undeveloped property like that? It's all, it's all been developed property. Is that my understanding?
Correct.
That is correct, as Ms. Parkins was pointing out, that the majority of these, again, gentlemen, were foreclosures. This, this is Mr. Ewing is pointing out, and Mr. Collins, you know, were zoned and were walked away from. They're very small, and as Ms. Parkins was talking about, the ordinance, you know, we do send the notices out, and we do get a lot of compliance even before we have to post it, so just, it, it's really small.
Well, I'm not trying to inflict my own views, is, is it, is there support for taking a look at this only on developed rezoned property and not undeveloped rezoned property?
I could support that, Mr. Chairman.
But like I said, I-
And B, and, and the B, the B districts.
Yeah.
If that were to be looked at, we'd have to see it again before it went to public hearing.
I guess I'd like to know what definition of developed as opposed to undeveloped, as in the case of if someone buys a piece of property, has it rezoned, that has buildings or a structure on it that they just walk away from, is that developed or undeveloped property?
When we get into Schickles definitions would be yes, but.
Okay, so if, if in fact it has some type of structure on it, we're calling that-
Even a parking lot or anything, it's an improvement to it.
And it's some kind of improvement other than raw land?
I'm just off the cuff giving it personal opinions, and they don't hold up when-
That seems sensible to me. I just want to make sure that's what we were saying, is developed is some type of improvement to the property.
If it's in its natural state.
Right.
I'm really troubled by it.
I agree.
I mean, I can see somebody, somebody getting permission to have a garden on a piece of rezoned property, and we got an ordinance that says they can't have it because the corn's over 18 inches tall, and they don't like the way it looks. I, I just fear of what we might get into here, because we are talking about clusters of residential dense housing next to, expect us the problem, B to an industrial, and some part of it even matters to me, what was it like when they built the house? I'm not sure I want to come in and clean up something that was there when they built the house even, but that, that's further complications. Anyway.
Is, is this the only way to address the situation we're talking about? There are no other ordinances that might come into play here?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I would, like I said, I would support if we wanted to look at removing the undeveloped property, maybe we need to look at the code a little bit more to see if we have a definition of what developed property is, and if we don't, maybe we need to come up with one. Not that I want to make the code any bigger than it already is.
I, I think I'm pretty clear on what, what you're seeking, so I don't think I'd have a problem going back and tweaking the text, if that's what you desire.
By consensus, support staff working a little bit more on this? Okay, and have we given you some things to think about at least?
Yes, sir.
Hopefully, that was progress.
Yes, sir.
We'll move on. Next is a discussion, R.A. rural area district setback waiver removal. Go ahead.
Again, thank you. This is a minor zoning ordinance revision to remove a waiver opportunity currently contained in the R.A. rural areas district that allows the board to reduce setbacks for an existing lot of record if an undue hardship exists. Now, the reason we're bringing this before you is that the waiver should be eliminated because these types of requests that reduce setbacks should be handled by the Board of Zoning Appeals. So this was discussed by the DRC and the Planning Commission last year, and tonight, we are seeking a decision from the board to send this, this proposed amendment forward to public hearing.
Question here from a fellow that historically has not wanted to see the waivers, the setbacks reduced, and maybe could rely on the board having to approve that. Now, BZA has it, is that gonna make them more likely or less likely, in somebody's opinion?
I think it avoids the water tank issues that we got into at Round Hill, where we issued a waiver on a setback. It's probably more appropriate before the BZA than it is you want.
So BZA's criteria for granting a waiver is undue hardship, among other things?
Correct.
Because again, I have, I have a, a long-term sensitivity of the residential growth adjacent to agricultural and the setbacks being not followed. You get an orchard.
Seemingly, if you have an existing lot that's non-conforming, and you want to put a structure on it, and everything works other than the setbacks, that's a hardship for the BZA, and the BZA can grant the setback.
Somehow, that didn't give me a lot of comfort.
Well, the other issue is, is when you put a water tank on a lot smaller than, than a regular-sized lot, it's a water tank, it's not a house, the BZA could grant that exception because it's not a residential structure.
So in that particular picker example, there was a fault in the process used by the board to grant the waiver, that this fixes what was wrong with what we did?
It was alleged, let's just put it that way. It was part of the lawsuit, that the board did not have the authority. It should have been a BZA issue, not a board issue.
It didn't have gone that route anyway without us doing the waiver?
I think so. To BZA? Yes.
Okay, so we eliminate one route, but the other route was always there anyway?
Right.
Okay.
You're not taking anything away.
Thank you very much. Okay. Is this a request for public hearing? All right. I don't know if it helps anybody else, but it helps me to know that there were two routes, now there's only one.
This is very appropriate, in my opinion, Mr. Chairman.
I thought it was the switching routes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move, we send this on to-
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Fisher. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Supervisor De Haven. Any discussion? Any on all's in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Those no? The, off to public hearing. Board liaison reports, are there any? Citizen comments, this is a portion of the board of the meeting that the board sets aside for citizen comments. Are there any citizens here who would like to address the board on any subject, and if so, would you come forward, give your name, magisterial district, limit your comments to three minutes, please? Anyone? Seeing no one will close the citizen comment portion of the meeting, board supervisors' comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Would it be appropriate for me to report out periodically as chairman of the business friendly effort?
Yes, sir. Please, would you, because I heard you tell somebody some things today that I was not aware of, and I think the board would like an update on progress to date, so please.
The committees have been contacted, the Development and Review Committee met yesterday, they elected their chairman, and they've started their process. So we are envision- So, we are envisioning during the month of January, we will have at least one, if not two, committee meetings. I will meet with the chairman once all of them have been appointed to make sure that the direction is set and the prerogatives that they have, but just wanted to let you know that the process is underway.
So, one committee has met or all have met?
One has met. Oh, excuse me, two.
Two? Did they select their chairman as well?
That I don't know, I just was informed that treasurer's, the revenue committee apparently met Monday night, and I believe the procurement committee, I believe, meets this coming Thursday, I think. So, we should have three committee meetings this week.
So, I don't know if it's more appropriate in weekly packets or at board meetings, but I'd like to have regular update, I don't know about everybody else, but.
We will.
I suspect some appearance at appropriate times would be okay from board members, but unless we knew when that might be, you might give some guidance there. But I think, I think the more support that we show for their work, the better it will be, but I don't think we need to meddle. That was not its intent.
We will try and give you the posted committee meeting dates and times.
And make sure that each committee knows that they're, they're welcome to, to request an appearance by any board member or all. I guess all causes a problem. Have they decided to treat those as public meetings?
I believe that we have.
Okay. So, if we showed up en masse, it would not alter anything because they're already advertised?
Correct.
Anything else, Mr. Rowley?
No, sir. I just wanted to know if that was where you would like me to be.
Well, I, I think, I think I speak on behalf of the board, there's high interest. Any other board of supervisors' comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have a short statement to make. Read. Mr. Chairman, fellow board members, most of you know by now that Jeanette and I have made arrangements to relocate into the new Orchard Ridge Retirement Community. Time to make that move has been scheduled for the first week of February. The move is outside the Opecan District, thus requiring me to resign my supervisor's position representing the citizens of the Opecan District. I certainly appreciate the support and cooperation that the citizens of the Opecan District, the chairman and board of supervisor members, county administrator, and county staff have provided me the past nine years. It's been an honor and a joy to serve, and I do make myself available to serve in any capacity in the future where I may be helpful. I will provide an official letter shortly providing exact time and date of my resignation, but I wanted to let you know in advance of my actions.
Now, what did you say on the, on the effective date?
I will be forwarding you a letter.
Well, it's been a pleasure, and the citizens have been well-served.
Well, thank you, sir.
Those will see you at least one more meeting?
One more.
Okay.
One more.
All right, well, we'll save the flowers comments.
I might have a few words to say then, too.
Any other supervisor comments?
If not, I almost forgot, sir. Move for adjournment, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those know, meeting adjourned.